I call a planning commission meeting for May 5, 2022 to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Ms. Small?
Excused.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting April 14, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have four public hearings, and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity to do so. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so as well, or some people may just have questions, and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a veterinarian's clinic at 8250 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Please come up and give us your name and address for the clerk, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Zapatelli. I'm a doctor of veterinary medicine. And we are looking to open up an urgent care veterinary center on Tyler Boulevard, replacing the previous med-vet veterinary emergency center at that location.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, I guess I just had a question for the applicant. She indicated was an urgent care.
Could you come back up, please? Thank you.
But the hours are nine to five. I just, is it, is it emergency care, or is it you have to make appointments ahead of time?
Uh, no appointments would be needed. It's going to be an urgent care center, similar to like an urgent care center for humans. Our goal is to kind of bridge the gap between the general practitioners, the regular vets you would have to make appointments for, and then the emergency centers. So we're not bombarding emergency centers with things general practitioners aren't able to see for weeks to months.
Thank you.
The hours are still limited to nine to five?
We're going to limit the hours probably to eight to eight.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Just one question, based on what we just heard. If you get a call and it's two o'clock in the morning, do you still, I mean, I don't know how you do it with urgent care with animals, but do you wait till eight o'clock to have them bring it in, or do they?
No, so that's where a 24/7 emergency care center comes into play, and they would have to go to the emergency center unless they wanted to wait till eight. But if it's a true emergency, they'll have to go to the emergency center.
So they have someplace else to go?
Yes, locally, there's places in Highland Heights, Akron, and then Brook Park are the closest emergency centers right now.
So are the, different than what it says here, it'll be eight to eight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve with the three conditions.
Second.
Let's, let's do a fourth condition on the hours, because it's different, right?
We didn't stipulate the hours. It's certainly up to the, the commission if they want to.
Yeah, let's, let's make the fourth condition, the operating hours are from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. We have a conditional use permit to allow child daycare, daycare center at 9521 Lake Shore Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Please come up and give us your name and address for the clerk, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good afternoon, members. Uh, my name is Pedro DiColari. I'm the vice president of My Kids Childcare.
Did you spell that?
D-O-K-O-L-L-A-R-I. And the address is 7672 Beaver Creek Drive, Mentor, Ohio, 44060.
Thank you.
My wife does the operation for this childcare. She is not here at this moment. We're planning on having a childcare for kids between the ages of six weeks to 14 years old. We're going to have approximately eight to nine rooms. Our operations are between 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, no weekends. Pretty much, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this public hearing? Is there anybody wishing to speak against this? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, other than the six items noted.
Anything from the commission members?
Kathy, just a question. This is, we saw this before, didn't we? This is the same proposal that we saw before.
Yes, the only exception is, is the, the conditional use permit expired, and then they also took, took over ownership of the property since then.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with six conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit to allow a school at 5025 Forest Road. Is that applicant here? Give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Um, yes, I'm Ryan Schmidt with TDA Architecture. Uh, we do have representatives from the school district as well. Uh, and our address is 4230 River Street, and that's Willoughby, 44094. Uh, so what this is, is across the street, which you can't see here, down that driveway, is the CARES School, which is an autism school in a former elementary school site, yeah, back in that location. Uh, it's very successful. It's been run very well, and it offers a very needed element in the, in the schooling capacity of the region. It offers space for students with these types of needs to kids from all over the region. And it's done very well. Uh, so, so to build on that, the idea is to create a house, a residential house, across the street. Uh, unfortunately, a, a property opened up at that location, and it's right adjacent to the school. So literally, kids would be dropped off at the CARES School. They'd go among, you know, have their regular day, and then they'd have the opportunity to walk across the street to this, to this other property. And the goal with this is, it's going to be, like I said, a typical residential-style building, a typical house, similar to some of the houses already on the street. But it will be used in a way to help families understand, you know, some of the features you can add inside your house to aid in the care of students with some of these conditions and disabilities and things of that nature. So it's, it's really kind of a teaching tool, but it's really working out of a standard house. We're not having extended parking lot. There's nothing of that nature. It's going to look like a house, and signage will be limited. Uh, this is an example of what the exterior might look like. Uh, we will go through the process of making sure it fits into the neighborhood. But again, the siding to match neighborhood houses, a little bit of stone or brick on the house itself. It just, it's going to look like a residential house. The goal is, you always got to have, make sure you have backup plans. So if this doesn't, it should, but if it doesn't pan out the way that everybody would like it to, it, it's going to be a saleable house, that they'd be able to sell as a residential property. So it's something that even in, if it doesn't work the way that it's originally intended to, there is a plan to make sure that it isn't, you know, eyesore or something like that in the neighborhood. It is still a functioning viable house, so. Any questions?
Hold on one second. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition?
I was going to vote in favor.
Okay, you, you want to come up and say something? Just give us your name and address for the clerk, please.
My name, my name is Nina Merzen, 7708 Twilight Mentor on Lake Ohio. I'm with Casper Enterprise Group. I own the lot behind it, and I was, owned those two lots that they're building the school on. I'm going to be building a house behind it as well, and I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody wishing to speak against this? This public, yep, you are? Yeah, please come on up. State your name and address.
Paul Domanvics. I'm, the house is next door to 5035 Forest.
Can you, can you spell that?
He needs to spell it.
Can you spell it, please? Can you spell your last name?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So I would be, if you're looking at where your arrows at, it's the house right next to it.
To the south?
On the right hand, that one to the right there.
Okay.
Okay. And my question is, um, that it's going to stay residential, and it's not going to be turned commercial affect my property. Is there any guarantee that that's going to happen? Or it could be turned to commercial property? For some reason, if this is just a temporary?
Yeah, Kathy, can you speak on that?
The zoning of the property is our two, uh, single-family residential, so the commercial is not a permitted use. The school is permitted conditionally, uh, as, with a conditional use permit, so they can't change it to a business of that nature. So this is not a rezone request. This is just an application to, to provide the training within this, within the housing structure.
Okay, because my biggest concern was a turn in commercial with our investment that we put in there to try to enhance the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, have a lot of input with the folks around there, trying to get the headlands area cleaned up, which is one of our main goals, too, to, uh, to get it up and coming, um, to a point that it's not going to go backwards with some. I just had nightmares of something turning commercial there, and that was my concern there.
Right.
But other than that, the plans that they're proposing on the house looks, looks good, except the wife would like the garage on the other side. But, um, did you have any other questions besides that? And then timeline, would they know of when they would start any construction? That they're giving you, would it be three months, a year from now?
I'll, I'll find that out for you.
Okay, okay. I think that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This public hearing is closed. Can you come on back up? Do you, could you touch on the timeline?
We don't have a hard timeline yet. Uh, we still have to, you know, finalize, you know, the purchase and those sorts of things. And then there, there were some soil issues that we have to work through. There was an old church there, and there was some fill, and I think it came up in the report that was issued. We have to figure out how to deal with that. But the goal is to get this done in a very timely manner, uh, once that goes. But, uh, yeah, we're always available for any questions that might come up, so.
Okay, so timeline, you think you want to be under construction this construction season, or?
I think that's the hope, if everything plays out the way that it needs to. But, you know, the way things are, I don't know if there's any, is that fair?
Yeah.
Could you come up, give us your name and address for the clerk, please?
You wanted to talk anyway.
Bill Wade, 6451 Center Street. I'm the CFO of Mentor Schools. Uh, our timeline would be, uh, once we receive a permit from the city to zone it for school use and get it approved, we'd then take it to the board for final approval to do the purchase. Uh, the board would then own the land. Once we own the land, uh, we'd go through the typical bidding process that we're obligated to as a public entity to get, uh, things moving in that direction. And if we could pan things out where we could still build before the frost in the, in the winter, we'd like to get that started as soon as possible. Goal would be to have it done this school year, so that some students could start utilizing the home to do work-study and things of that nature that we submitted in the proposal.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
You could, just to reassure the gentleman who spoke and maybe other people in the neighborhood, the school system has no interest whatsoever in making it, using it as a commercial property.
No, it's strictly, uh, it would be a residential property used for educational purposes.
I just wanted to have it stated. Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Tiedemann?
A quick question for, for you as well.
Mr. Wade?
The, uh, you said the, the kids will get dropped off at the school, and then they'll walk over to the house?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Is that, like, at the beginning of the day, or is that, is there a timeframe where you think how this is all going to play out?
We, we plan on using the house during normal school hours. So it'd be in the morning when they get dropped off, they'd then walk over and spend the majority of their day in the house, working on life skills.
Okay, and then teachers that work in the house, obviously, they're going to be parking at the school?
Correct.
I'm just trying to, so you guys understand, the garage probably won't even, excuse me, be used for, like, a normal garage.
Just, just the other thing, too, was, uh, partially, it was a timeline.
Could you come, come up?
It was stated in some of it, was a timeline of nine to five. Uh, that was what we were told along those lines, too, um, of hours of business or what the kids and stuff and everything like that. So, um, and then no weekends, obviously. Thank you.
And then you'll have, like, the normal traffic safety in place? I don't know, a crosswalk or something like that? Because there's the one sidewalk we can see in that one picture, coming from the school. There's no crosswalk or anything right there, because it's not in, and I know we're talking about a quiet residential street, but safety is utmost with kids.
If the city would be agreeable to put a crosswalk there for us to have that specific space, yes. Otherwise, we'd use the safety precautions that we have in place now when the students cross the street to go different places when they're out in the community and the like.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the five conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
See how easy that is? We have a conditional use permit to allow vehicle sales, service, and leasing Genesis of Mentor. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Will you give us your name and address for the clerk, please?
Kurt Hansen, Classic Auto Group, 8470 Tyler Boulevard in Mentor. Uh, Classic Auto Group is proposing to construct a 11,000-square-foot fancy showroom and service facility for the Genesis brand. Uh, the new facility located on 1.75 acres, uh, which is obviously the highlighted area in gray up there on the site plan, uh, on the Classic Auto campus. We're, we're very excited about this project. Uh, allows us to bring a unique luxury brand to, basically to the community. Uh, the Genesis dealership will be one of 300 projected Genesis dealerships in the United States. What's been is four in the Cleveland-Acron market. Currently, our belief is the closest one will be over in Bedford Auto Mile. So this is obviously a very new kind of thing, basically taking the Genesis brand out of the existing Hyundai into its own unique building.
Thank you. Is anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone wishing to speak against it? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, Mr. Chairman, we just have two conditions for the CUP.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the two conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have a preliminary site plan of a car dealership, Genesis of Mentor, at 8494 Tyler Boulevard. Why don't you talk about the site plan a little bit?
So I want to give a brief, kind of, word of speech, because originally, the plan was for the new Genesis dealership was going to take down existing, the front portion, existing reconditioning center, which is right there to the, the west. And then we're just going to take that down, build a new Genesis dealership, obviously, build a new reconditioning center over behind the Cadillac building. That has obviously since changed, obviously, with Hyundai and Genesis and kind of their whole thought process. Uh, we feel actually how this is, it has now became, is a better off plan than how originally it was, how it was going to be. So we are going to overall leave the reconditioning center as it is. We're going to take the front cone off the reconditioning center, build, open it up, build the Genesis building there on what is existing parking lot area. And then as part of it as well is the existing east curb cut that was into the reconditioning center, that we're going to take that out, move that up to the far east property line adjacent to Toyota, Classic Toyota. Uh, this allows you, allow the easier access into for Genesis that way, so people are not trying to fight with getting into Genesis versus coming into the reconditioning center for the, the classic employees, and also back to the parts warehouse as well. Uh, the other nice thing this is going to allow, too, was taking that front cone off of the reconditioning center. Uh, we would now be able to go from classic Ford all the way down to classic Mazda, the used car lot at the corner, the car wash and the fuel tank, without ever having to go out on Tyler Boulevard, uh, which is, is very great for the, basically, the staff and the employees, and obviously customers as well. Uh, overall, you can see on the plan there, like I said, it's 11,000-square-foot building. Uh, on the east side of the building is a two-lane service drive. And then on the west side is a enclosed new car delivery area. Right behind the new car delivery area is a, a zen garden that Genesis is using on all the dealerships right now. So as you're in the new car delivery area, you'll be able to look behind, you know, the little zen garden there. Also, too, they kind of have a zen garden inside the building as well. Basically, you can see through from the customer lounge and through the restrooms as well. Can you pull up the elevations? As you can see, these are proposed elevations for the Genesis facility. These are basically their exact sort of prototypical design that they're going to be using throughout the United States, with this obviously being a brand-new ground facility. So we're able to stay strictly with the design that they have been looking for. Uh, as you can see on the, basically on the front elevation and the sides as well, and even the rear, that they have basically the use of mostly all glass with a steel frame hidden behind everything. And then obviously, kind of a thin, high-up facade that'll kind of project out. And obviously, too, it's all, the whole front and the sides are all basically ACM metal panel with the, the high-up main field is primary gray metal panel color. And then when you get over to the service drive and new car delivery, they switched over to a black metal panel at that location. Uh, around the rear of the building, it is currently designed to be Eiffel on that, which is a, basically a black color, will be very similar to the black ACM metal panels. So obviously, overall, the, the design's very modern and sleek, and, uh, like I said, mostly with the glass, you'll fully see inside the building.
And you said this is only one of 100 in the country?
This would basically be one of approximately 300 that they're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, this started basically almost five years ago, that Hyundai is looking at to split the Genesis brand out of the buildings. Uh, and this is finally, it's basically came down to that if you want the Genesis brand, you have to build a standalone building for it. So there is a lot of dealerships that are choosing to give the Genesis portion back to Hyundai. And then obviously, those that are choosing to keep the Genesis are, are going ahead, and as Classic is doing, and building a standalone building. And then on this building, there's basically called three EV labs. So basically, in this building, they're only serviced electrical vehicles only for Genesis. Uh, any gas-powered Genesis vehicles will be taken over to the main Hyundai dealership to be repaired.
And no other electrical vehicles, even if they're put on the grid, can go there?
This is, it's basically dedicated for Genesis only.
Okay.
So then obviously, it'll be outside EV charging, obviously, inside the, each EV bay that there is, obviously, EV chargers inside as well.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy, anything from administration?
I know, we have 10 conditions that we recommended to the commission.
And you've read the staff report?
Yes.
Understand the 10 conditions?
Yes.
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
My usual comment. It looks fine, looks great, looks like you have a dead flat roof. And then number three condition discusses it and makes it a condition that we don't want to see the mechanical equipment. You know where the mechanical equipment's going to go?
Yeah, actually, Genesis and Hyundai have done a very excellent job with these. I don't have any part of this to be in, in part of final site plan review, that they have actually planned as part of their design intent documents that, uh, as you see, kind of the center of the building, where the atrium is in there, but right behind over the, the EV labs, there's actually going to be, the rooftop units are all required to be there, and they have a screen that goes around all that. So they've actually done a very good job to address that ahead of time, and.
It's just my tech.
Yes.
That's all.
No, I think they've, they took consideration and a lot ahead of time to make sure, because like I said, they want that sleek look, and that's, they want to make sure that the architects and the dealerships that are building these, that it's complies with the look that they want it to be.
Well, you'll be back for final architecture.
Yes.
But I just wanted to throw that out, because when you look at the drawings, they're, they always don't show anything, you know?
Thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with 10 conditions?
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have a miscellaneous review of a building addition, site alteration, Mentor High School at 8610 Munson Road. I see that applicant is here. Will you state your name and, again, and address again for the clerk, and tell us a little bit what you want to do?
Sure, Ryan Schmidt, TDA Architecture, 4230 River Street, Willoughby. Uh, yeah, this project is really, uh, it's been years in process, actually. Um, the current facilities for athletic training on the campus over at Mentor High School are very limited. They do have PE and recreational after-hours type of facilities on the current stadium campus, but it's, it's a very small building, and it's not suitable for the amount of students that Mentor Schools has. Uh, so this was looked at as an upgrade to provide space for that athletic training in an area that's big enough to accommodate the student capacity that they have in a safe manner. Uh, it's also going to be utilized as kind of an entry piece to the stadium. Uh, presently, there's a tiny little ticket booth up front, um, and this would essentially create a plaza entry to that piece. Um, this is not adding, uh, people to the campus. This is used by people that are already on the campus. Uh, and this is intended to help provide concessions and tickets in a much more, um, convenient way at the front of the, of the facility, right near the entrance to that piece. So, um, it's actually one building, it looks like two buildings, but there's a connection between the two. Uh, the southern portion of that, which will shield some of the mechanical yard that's essentially between, uh, the bleachers and the front of campus, there's gas meters and things like that, transformers and such. This will be in front of that to help as a shielding element and kind of create an entry piece with the stadium back behind it and the bleachers back behind it. And then the other smaller piece is the ticket booth, which will face out towards the incoming people. And then around the back end side, there would be concessions, uh, there would be two windows, or three windows of concessions on the building towards the back. Entrance into the building, we have egress doors from that south building that go out on both sides, but the intention is that people would go through the main gates, so this would not be used in a, in a way that people would be coming off the street. The main entrance is down in this, the, the right-hand corner there. Yeah, and that's a vestibule airlock. The other two are strictly because of the size of the building, you need to have two means of egress out of the building, and that's how that's being provided. Uh, within that building, like I said, it's mostly just a big open space for fitness equipment. There's two bathrooms, there's a small office for, uh, staff to keep items and to have their computers, and then there's a mechanical room and janitor's room, but that's all that's in that building, so. Um, the intentions with the design of the building, as far as look and such, are to kind of start pulling, uh, some of the ideas that started with the Paradigm Center into the rest of the campus. Uh, as we've done work in softball and other areas, uh, and some kind of improvements to some of the existing buildings as far as finishes go, we keep pulling in these kind of gray panels and gray sidings and such to try and unify the campus and not have a myriad of small, you know, differently looking buildings. And this one, again, pulls panels, like are very similar to the Paradigm Center. Uh, it's pulling some brick into the building in the very, um, tangible areas where you're walking by it, so that people aren't messing with panels. And it kind of brings that idea back to this with some glass and some kind of signage and things of that nature. and things of that nature. We'd also be providing a nice gate system across the front of the building that gets you back into there. And then there's a covered piece at the gates where ticket takers will be able to take tickets and stay out of the rain. So I do have larger renderings. I did print them out if anybody needs to see them.
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Kathy, anything from administration?
I'd just ask if the applicant could expand on the HVAC equipment on the roof. They were unusually high, tall, so we recommended as condition number two that they be ground mounted. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I I went over it with my engineers about 100 times trying to get a smaller mechanical unit. The way this building is set up, it's set up to be as efficient as possible so we don't end up with a bunch of stuff. But it's essentially a central location where there's a drop and there's a feed that runs across the building. And so it was ideal to have the mechanical unit at that that central point of the building. The height of it, that's the smallest unit that they make that can handle that capacity of a building. I asked about maybe two smaller units and the height doesn't really drop much and the footprint only gets marginally smaller and it would actually look worse if we went with something like that, unfortunately. I think these with the trees and such that are in the area probably won't be that noticeable. It's typical for the school district to put the mechanical units on the roof just because it is a student campus. And while students in Mennor are very good students and behave, there are instances where stuff gets messed with sometime and it's it's best to be, you know, put it out of reach if possible, so.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I realize that the conditions are more of a request than they are a condition. Is there a possibility of screening the equipment on the roof, maybe with the same panel system or something similar?
I think if we were to go that route, we probably would put it on the ground if it reaches a point where that is more palatable. We'd have to figure out a way to fence it and put it in the back. To do those screening systems, they're generally more expensive than anybody could possibly imagine and it it kind of puts it out of range. And then anytime you need to do maintenance, you got to pull off panels and things like that. So by the time you go through all those measures, it probably is a better solution to move it down to the ground if we get to that point.
I mean, and the only reason the city brought it up, the renderings never show the units.
They don't, they don't. I showed them in my elevations.
I understand and through the working drawings, I understand. And so they are really, it is a really big unit. I'm, I don't know, you know, again, I don't know that we can require you to do it, but if there was, I mean, it's a condition, I would hold that condition, but I think the conditions are really requests.
I would recommend modifying the condition though, or we can say recommend instead of shall.
Well, we leave it shall.
Is there another type of screening that's possibly not the panels? That's just some sort of?
So.
An easier, I hate to say it, a less expensive way to?
No, and the one I was talking about was the less, there's a brand called Cityscapes. They do all kinds of this screening. They're plastic panels that get put around this thing and they, in my opinion, don't look very good. Not much of an improvement over a painted mechanical unit and that's not saying much for the panel system. So if I were to go that route and we reached a point where we're like, yeah, we don't, we don't feel comfortable with this, I'd rather put it on the ground, quite frankly, and fence around it. It would have to go in the back, back by that that mechanical equipment that's already back there. There's, like I said, there's a meter and such that's in that yard back there, so it would go back there.
Is that fenced off now?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a, you can see that little angle down and left a little bit right there. That's where the fence kind of kicks back up. And there is an electrical transformer. We will need to do a little bit of electrical transformer work back there as well, but that will all be submitted, obviously.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
The least is maybe to make it the least objectionable color.
Yes. I agree with that.
And I'll leave that up to you to decide what that is.
Yes.
But I mean, you're using grays, maybe it's like a gray color darker than lighter or, you know, I don't know, you figure it out.
No, I.
You know, I mean, if you can screen it, that would be the better solution. Putting it on the ground is also a good solution, but I understand that we're recommending this, but it's more of a recommendation than a condition, right?
Appreciate that and we we will talk about it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
We'll leave that condition as written.
I mean, if you're, if it's not going to be a requirement and we're just making a recommendation, I would, I would recommend that we change it to recommend.
Okay, recommend. We'll make the change to the second condition to recommend.
Is there anything else from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with two conditions, two recommendations.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thanks. Miscellaneous review of a building additions, site alteration at 8477 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Give us your name and address and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Barry Demming, Demming Enterprises. My address is 3767 Lane Road in Perry. We are the builder proposing to do this addition to component repair technologies. The size 31,400 ish square feet. The use, they're going to be moving their inspection facilities and some production into this area, which will free up some space in their existing building to do some rework in there to better their production flow. There is an existing building, it's a storage building that will be demolished to make room for this. I don't know if that shows on this one, but in that general area right there. So that would be done first and then the addition. As far as the architecture, if we can address a couple of those things, the left, the left hand corner of this, the high corner of the building is approximately eight feet above the roof level. So all of the HVAC equipment will be behind that and shouldn't be visible anywhere from the street or anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, anything from administration?
I know, Mr. Chairman, we just have recommended 10 conditions.
And you've read the staff report and understand and read the conditions?
Mm-hmm.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the 10 conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Miscellaneous review to transfer and amend conditional use permits for a restaurant, outdoor dining, and temporary events at 7338 Industrial Park Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Tell us a little bit about what you want to do. Give us your name and address, too, thanks.
I'm Dale Greeter with Arkenetix, 3273 Pearl Road, Cleveland, Ohio, 44109. This is the bar owner.
Kelsey Sirvinskas, 29931 Chardin Road, and I'm in Willoughby Hills.
Did you spell that last name?
I know, S.I.R.V.I.N.S.K.A.S.
Thank you.
So we're looking to.
You got to get it closer to the.
I'm sorry. We're looking to do an expansion of an existing martini bar into a vacant adjacent space, looking to take about 2,000 square feet of that space, install a prep kitchen, a new bar, a dining area, and a lounge area up front, as well as extending, expanding the existing patio, which will be about 500 square feet. Existing canopies to remain.
Match all the front.
Yeah.
Thanks. Kathy, could you give us a little rundown on on the?
Absolutely.
CUPs and?
Sure. So this, this particular use, they've been before the commission a number of times and we have on file, on record, three conditional use permits, one for a restaurant, one for outside patio, and then for their temporary events. In an effort to make sure that all three are properly updated, making sure that the ownership is properly transferred in the correct name, we presented all three items with an amendment to the site plan on the recommended list of conditions. So it's not as complicated as it may look. It really is honestly more for housekeeping purposes to make sure, again, all of the the conditional use permits that we have on record reflect the most current, up to date use and expansion that's on site. So we have it broken down first as an amendment to the site plan and then the amendment to the CUP for the restaurant, the outdoor patio, and then finally for the, for the temporary event, that was again, our request again, to streamline the ownership and make sure everything was up to snuff with the records. There is, so what you see there on the list of conditions are basically a lot of the existing conditions, which some of which are no longer applicable because at the time they were already done. So we've updated those, but essentially what you'll see there is is just ownership name transfers. And then we reference this particular staff report because we wanted to show and make sure that it was clear for the record that this is a 2,200 square foot restaurant expansion as well as an outside patio expansion because they do have a partial covered outside patio as well as an open patio. And there has been some confusion over the years, so we just wanted to make sure that was cleaned up. There is, when we get to the temporary event, there is a minor recommended verbiage change, which we can explain at that point, but if you could do four separate votes, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. So we're going to, we'll go through and we'll do four separate votes. So is there any discussion on the amendment to the site plan? With that, I'll entertain a motion on the miscellaneous review of the amendment of the site plan.
Move to approve with the three conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
And then this is the amend the conditional use permit restaurant bar with expansion. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
It looks to me, and I kind of looked at this, that for the proposed solution, you need 154 spaces. And that you have 85.
That's parking.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I'm looking at the site plan that you provided. It's up there now, yeah. And I, I just don't see all this 154 spaces. Now, I know you're, you're wanting to use other spaces that are adjacent or in some location. Could you talk maybe about where these other spaces are that are not here?
So when we were here in the past, we kind of went through a similar parking thing for our original CUP. And a lot of the reason that it worked out so well for us to be in this building is that all of the businesses that are currently in the building with us are all daytime businesses. So there are no cars that are actually parked really there in the evening besides our cars. Also, we gained a lot of parking spaces by the visiting physicians moving out because they had around 30 to 35 cars in that parking lot at night, every night they closed because then they would come back in the morning for their job and get dispersed where they would go. So we, with this 50, 60 seats, I think are actually going to gain some parking places with those cars being gone. So I'm hoping it to not be an issue.
Sure. I'm not, I don't think there's a problem with finding 154 spaces. I just kind of wanted to know where they were. Because this drawing doesn't show me that. It's okay, I understand it. I think it was up there a while.
Yeah, to the west.
There's more. Now, it is required that you, you actually have written agreements with these other establishments and it has to be, I don't know, submitted to the city or the county, right? It has to be?
They were originally.
Okay, well, I mean, and again, I think the ownership changed and that would mean the, the, you just need to do that again, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
So you need to be able to count for the 154 spaces that's required for this use. And, you know, have some, I do think there's one condition though, and I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but I think they all have to be within 500 feet of the, of their location. Isn't there something?
They are.
They are. So you've already tested that.
I'm pretty confident that the, that the adjacent parking lot will be able to support that.
I'm just trying to check it through, that's all.
Yep.
Because I was, because I couldn't see where they were and I just want to make sure that everyone knows. So that condition, which is in this next, that's the condition three. I'm going to prepare a copy, okay. And, and can we add to that, that it, I think it has to be submitted to the county, Lake County?
I think you're talking about recording it for easement purposes.
Recording it, yes, that's it. Recording it for easement purposes to add that language to the third condition. Because I think that's what it says in the regulations.
The shared parking agreement section of the code does speak to that and I think to solidify the, the, and protect both parties in the future, other than just having a letter that says you can park there.
Right, right. That's exactly correct, yeah.
If you have an easement, then it's, it's more protected.
The code, I think, and if I say something wrong, please clarify. I think it has to be a registered easement with the county. If the spaces are there and you've already got relationships with all these people, it shouldn't be an issue. But it should, we should do this by the numbers so there's no issue down the road. If one of their owner, one of those other properties change and you don't have it, you don't have it registered with the county, then they may say, no, you don't have any agreement with us, you know? And so this would protect everybody and to make sure that all the parking is legit.
What's the process to do then?
Don't ask me. Joe?
Joe, do you?
Generally, what we want to do is approach, you know, one of those adjacent property owners, whomever they may be, and see what they might be interested to do relative to an easement agreement. Now, maybe your landlord is the appropriate party and probably is the appropriate party to explore that because this is the property that would be benefited by a parking easement. Now, I don't know which of the adjacent properties necessarily you would approach, maybe all of them, maybe, maybe only one or two of them. The easement therefore would set forth the respective rights and obligations of the two property owners for the use, maintenance, upkeep, timing of parking use, terms relative to breach of same, for example, whether it expires in any particular period of time. It may expire, you know, for example, if Billy's ever relocates and ceases operations there. The advantages of it, obviously, as Mr. Varga alluded to, is, you know, you've got to, you're making a significant further investment in this and the people that you're dealing with on the adjacent properties today, you know, if the property sells and you're not dealing with those same parties and all you have is what's called a revocable license, which means, yes, you have permission to use my property as long as I tell you, you can use my property. That, that doesn't afford you any protection whatsoever, frankly, because again, it's revocable. You don't have any legal interest in the use of that adjacent property. And so therefore, as Mr. Varga indicated, a recorded easement is something that, you know, would, would assure your rights and obligations with respect to the use of the adjacent. If it's, if that's a bridge too far for one of those property owners, you know, in theory, a license agreement may satisfy the city's code, but it's going to have to be something which is not terminable at will. You know, something that would at least survive the, the operation of your business there so it doesn't, doesn't automatically terminate in a year or two. And so the city could take a look at that and see whether or not a license agreement could, could affect the same, you know, result as a permanent easement that would be of record. I can't foreclose that. I can't provide you any legal counsel. Again, what we do is we review things when they're put in front of us and state whether they're code compliant and if they're not code compliant, what it would take to get code compliant. So those are some of the variables that you'd be looking at. Obviously, you may want to consult legal counsel to help you draft some of those agreements or consult your landlord as well, see, see what they, they can bring to bear in that regard. I don't, I'm not aware if there's anything currently of record. It sounds like there isn't. It sounds like all you got was sort of a letter saying, okay, you can use it. That, that, again, I'm not dividing, again, you're, you're therefore at the mercy of that property owner moving forward. And in my experience in the private sector, the people that you're dealing with today aren't necessarily the people that you're dealing with tomorrow. Properties change hands, uses change hands, corporate philosophies change sometimes and you could very easily get a letter saying, sorry, you're no longer allowed to use that. There's nothing the city's going to be able to do about that in that case and obviously that may create a parking deficiency with your, with your operation, which may, which may therefore require the city's intervention if, if there's a problem out there. So that's about all I got, probably beat that to death, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Zeman. Thanks, Mr. Zeeman. Is there anything else from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion, and it looks like we're going to change condition number three.
I guess in the change to three would be as stated, but also including that the easements would be, that you would, you would establish easements, parking easements, and have them recorded with the county? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, without recordation, they're pieces of paper.
Or a copy of shared parking?
Licensing.
License slash easement agreement shall be provided by the, to the city.
Doesn't it have to be submitted to the county?
Well, ultimately, absolutely.
Okay. I, I'm sorry if I'm seeming real picky, but I just want it to be clear so that everything goes forward without any issues, and that you don't end up with a situation down the road where you're not allowed, you can't get fully parked to meet the code, and that would put your building in, in violation, and you don't want that to happen, you know, so.
So I'll entertain a motion on the amend conditional use permit restaurant slash bar.
One, two, three. And there's three active, three active conditions, correct? Two, three, and five.
Correct.
Right, you're striking the?
Right.
1, 4, 6, 7.
Yep.
So I move to approve with three, those three conditions, number three being edited.
I'll second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. And now we'll do the amend conditional use permit for the outdoor patio. So is there anything you want to say about the patio, or did you cover it all?
Pretty much covered it. It'll just be an expansion of the existing patio, seating only with a fireplace.
Just to make a good flow, make it cohesive. New entrance, make it nice, but match everything throughout the building. Same stone, same awnings.
Actually, no awnings are over this part of the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's not covered.
They're actually going to take the existing bar and rotate it so it's centered over, under the existing canopy, so there's flow back and forth to each side.
So people can move around easier.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy, anything on this?
Just to clarify on item number two, it says, and this was an existing condition, hours until 2:30 a.m. I know that's not your current hours. Did you want to modify that?
So I was, yes, I wanted to. Right now, we're not staying open until that long. We're closing by midnight, and I'm not even open on Mondays. But in case we ever have a private party or something like that, I just want, I don't want to be against the code, but as of now, we're nowhere near those hours of operation. And I hopefully probably won't use them.
That's a late night.
Yeah, late night on Monday. So if we could keep them, it would be great, but.
Wanted to ask.
Realistically, we're not using them.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members on this? With that, I'll entertain a motion?
A motion to approve with eight conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. And now an amendment to the conditional use permit for temporary events. Is there anything you want to speak on that?
No. None of this would change from what we're currently doing and what we did for, I think we've been doing it seven years now. So it changed a little bit throughout COVID, obviously, which we got another temporary for that was separate. But we would go back to the more simplistic, one day a week, three-hour time slots, done by 10 on the weekdays, done by 11 on the weekends. I think we have two a month. I don't even think we hit those. I don't have any schedule for this upcoming year besides one, so. Just Thursday nights, three hours. Everything else would be free parking lot.
Okay. Kathy, is there something that you wanted to add?
No, we have one clarifying language in item number one, and that's just to not tie them to one Friday and one Saturday. If it's two weekend nights per month, if it's two Saturdays, we really don't care, or two Fridays. So we just didn't want to be that, hold them to those two days, particular days.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
I just have a question, Kathy. I, I don't see any remarks from the fire department. So my assumption is they don't have a problem with having the, what would be a continuous fire lane. I understand you can kind of get around on one side, and it's a, it's a dead end. The fire marshal is aware of this? He, he finds it okay? Does he have?
He's aware of it. He reviewed it. There is an item number six, shall be maintained on the perimeter of the parking lot area, fire lanes. And if, of course, if they, if they choose to put any tents up, those would have to be submitted for review and approval, which the, which the fire department would weigh in on, but that is a building permit requirement. But they are aware of the, of this overall request.
Okay. I mean, it's, I always think about what the fire department needs, too. And I would have thought they might have reacted to the fact that that blocks that driveway completely.
There was an existing truck turn study done.
Mm-hmm.
So we did design within that. So that's all maintained.
They can back up to. I, I'm just, sometimes they really just want to be able to get all the way around, and that's fine. I just, I just wanted to get a clarification to make sure that he was okay with it.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with seven conditions.
I'll second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Kathy, anything from administration?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.